Good evening. Welcome to the Murray City Planning Commission meeting of March 3, 2022. Want to want to welcome the public and introduce the commissioners who are present. We have Lisa Milkovich, we have Jake Pearson, and we have Michael Richard, and I am Michael Richards, and I am Jeremy Lowry. Want to, we have a smaller than normal commission, 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 commission group here today, but we do have a quorum. I would like to ask all to silence your cell phones. If you need to take a phone call, we'd like to ask you to, to go and take it in the hall during the, during the meeting. We have, we have a, want to go through our agenda. So our first item is approval of minutes from the meeting of February 17, 2022. From there, we will go through and discuss any conflicts of interest. At that, after that point, we will review the approval of findings or review the findings of fact for our, our meeting of February 17, 2022 for M-Town Auto Elite Services and Waterstone Plan Unit Development. After which we will go through the conditional use permit for AK Granite, Dirty Devil Disposal, and Come and Go. This meeting is being recorded. All comments are on record. For those that are, that are here, for both as applicants and the public, we are, we welcome you, and we're, we are excited to hear your comments. We would ask when you speak that you come to the podium, to my right, near the north wall. We'd ask you to speak into the microphone. It may not sound like it's, it may not sound like it's picking up your voice very well, but it, it is for the folks that are, that are, that are watching online and for the recording. We'd ask you to direct any comments to the chair and commission and not the audience and, or, or, or to an applicant, or if you're the applicant to, to any residents. We ask you to state your name and address for the record, and we would ask you to limit your time to three minutes. We have a, we have, we have, we have some public record, we have some comments that will enter into public record that are, that are emails. We would ask those that, that, that shared emails, if that, if you'd like that to be your public comment, to let that be your public comment, and if not, then, then we're, then we would refrain from reading those, and then you would, you'd be free to make a public comment for three minutes. And from, and we'll go from there. So at this point, we, we, as a, as a commission, we have reviewed the, the minutes from our meeting of February 17, 2022. There were some very small grammatical errors that were, that were corrected. Do we have a motion? I'll entertain a motion to, to, a motion on those minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the February 17, 22 Commission meeting.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lisa Milkovich. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Pearson, Jake Pearson, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving on to conflicts of interest. We have, we have reviewed the, the applications. Are there any commissioners who have a conflict of interest within, within any of these circumstances?
No.
No. I do. I know Mr. Hinckley quite extensively, and I have let him know that I will not be able to, to render a, to render a decision I would abstain and will abstain from his application. Unfortunately, because we only, we only have four commissioners here, we will not have a quorum for, for his application for Dirty Devil Disposal, and he's, he's agreed to allow that to move to the next, the next, to our next meeting. Mr. Hinckley, I apologize for the inconvenience.
So I think that would need to be, yeah, you'll need to, you can either do it now, or you can wait until that agenda item to move and table it.
I think in the interest of time, Mr. Hinckley's time, we should do it now, so he can, he can leave if he, if he would like to.
Yep, just make sure in the motion, when you table it, table it to the next meeting, which would be March 17.
March 17, thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, is there a motion to table the conditional use permit for Dirty Devil Disposal?
I'll make a motion that we table item number five, Dirty Devil Disposal, until the March 17 meeting.
Commissioner Pearson has made a, has made a motion to table condition, item number five, Dirty Devil Disposal, to our March 17 meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very well. Commissioner Richards has seconded it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Sorry, Zach, I did it instead. I apologize.
Okay, that's fine. Technically, I think it needs to be, yes, it needs to be a roll call.
Alright, it's a roll call, but my apologies.
I will do it real quick.
Yep, sounds good.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
And Chair Lowry.
Yes.
Perfect.
Mr. Hinckley, we appreciate you coming. If you'd like to, to leave, we understand. Thank you very much. Moving on to our approval of findings of fact for the applications for M-Town, M-Town Auto Elite Services and Waterstone Plan Unit Development, we have, have reviewed. Is there a motion to, is there a motion on, on the findings of fact?
I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact and conclusions for the Waterstone Plan Unit Development and the M-Town Auto Elite Services.
We have a motion from, from Commissioner Pearson to approve the finds of fact for M-Town Auto Elite Services and Waterstone Plan Unit Development. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Very well. Second from, from Commissioner Milkovich. We can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Very good. It's fast. Okay, with that, we will move on to our conditional use permits. The first is, is number four, which is AK Granite. Is the applicant here for, for this? Welcome. Thank you for being here. We have our, this was, this will be presented by a member of our staff. Seth Rios is going to, will present this application.
So the applicant is seeking a conditional use for a granite countertop manufacturing business. So they're, they're in an industrial park at 150 West, 4800 South, Unit 35. This one, you can see here on the screen. The business would be just like it says, they'd be making granite, well, they'd receive granite, they'd be cutting the granite stone and then making them into countertops, and then transporting them to their clients' homes and installing them. The applicant said that they have four employees that will be working in this shop. Oh, I forgot to say, it's in the manufacturing general zone, like I said, in the industrial park there. Staff, well, this is the site plan that was provided, or the floor plan that was provided by the applicant of what the shop will look like. Really pretty basic, just have the saw there. On the left side is where he stores his remnants. He'll have a trailer in there where he'll be storing what they cut. And then there's also an office, two offices, one that's a break room for the employees, and one that's like for the owner to conduct his business. Pretty simple. So staff is recommending approval with certain conditions on this business. One of them is that they apply to, that they comply with the building and fire code standards. The next one is that they provide appropriate amount of parking, which is four. This is because the applicant mentioned that he's had issues with some of the other people in the industrial park that take his spots, so he made it a condition that when he applies for his business license, he'll be able to provide like a statement from the owner saying that he's committed to providing him the four parking spaces and providing him continuous access. The next condition that we are recommending is that the stone not be allowed to store, be stored out in front of his shop. And then, yeah, the last one is just that he applies for a Murray City Business License and pays applicable fees.
Very good. Are there any questions from the commission for staff?
You know, I will have questions about parking, but I'm, I think I can wait and ask the applicant. I guess, though, one question that is kind of the same, but slightly different, that we kind of talked about, but didn't talk about in the pre-meeting. Remnants are the same as the material, correct? So if I were to store material outside the building, the condition says you can't do that, so if we were storing the remnants in a trailer, can I store that outside the building? How does?
Like, like it shows on the site plan, they're currently stored on the inside. He keeps his trailer on the inside, and he pulls it out every day to go empty it at the right spot.
So I'll confirm with him, but I'm just wondering if he's now required to bring the material that's currently outside into the building, will there still be room for the trailer? But I'll confirm with him, right?
I think technically he could keep this trailer out on, on there, even if it has material on it. It's technically on the trailer. That gets into weird, weird legalese or whatever about what's really what. Very philosophical question. Is it really there? You don't know. So I, I think that, that if he ends up parking the trailer outside after hours, that would, I mean, be his prerogative, and it would be within his.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to get philosophical or nifty. I'm just worried about parking. And if we have two work trucks, a trailer that we're now using for storage and a parking spot.
Yeah.
And parking, we're underparked, but I don't know if we can get around that because the way the code's written, so.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Seth, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Ariaga, would you like to come and, and, come, come and, and talk about your application? Right, remind you to state your name and your address?
Hello, Juan Ariaga.
Welcome.
And my address is 4800 South, 150 West, Unit 35 in Murray. And we provide granite countertops and cabinets.
Very good. Have you, have you reviewed the, the four requirements?
Yes.
Would you, will you be able to comply with them?
Yeah.
Very good. We'll open it to any questions from, from the commission to the applicant. Unless, do you have anything else you'd like to share with the, with the commission?
So, Mr. Ariaga, sorry, apologize for slaughtering that. Talk to me about your parking. So currently, I'm just concerned about having space for your customers and your employees. So I think the application said you have two work trucks, you have four employees, and then that trailer. What are your thoughts? Will it work?
The thing is, I'm around mechanics and body shops, so they always take my spot. And I always had to fight with them to move the cars, and sometimes they apply with that, and sometimes they don't care.
I guess the answer to that concern is you can always call Murray if others aren't complying with their parking regulations.
I called the landlord, and she talked to them for a while. They listened for a week, two weeks, and then they go back and do the same thing.
So parking is going to be a concern with this site. I don't know if there's anything we can do to address it right now, but.
It's a new site.
Hi, it is Scott Gordon, right? Well, I wish there was something we could do to make parking better.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Ariaga, any else you want to add?
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
This time we'll open up to any, please have, have a seat. We'll open up to any other public comment or on this, on this application. Zach, did we, we, did we receive any, any, any written or, or emailed correspondence on this? Very good.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Did we have another discussion about the drainage of water that we wanted to have?
I think that it's. I, I, well, I think that we should, we can definitely have a discussion about that. I think that one of the concerns that was, that was mentioned in the, in the commission was the, the water drainage and the treatment of, treatment of wastewater. We, however, it would be, that, that falls under the, the Murray City Business Licensing Division and Code Enforcement. And so we would want to make, that make you aware of that, that that's something that is of, of concern for a business like this. Anything else you want to add to that?
I think that was all.
Did we open the public comment?
We have opened it. We are, we are, we are, we're in it right now. I'm about ready to close it. Not seeing any other, any other public comments, I think we can, we're safe to close it unless there are further discussions from the commission. Okay, we can entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for a granite manufacturing and contractors business at 150 West, 4800 South, Number 35, subject to conditions one through four.
We have a motion to approve a conditional use permit for a granite manufacturing contractors business at 150 West, 4800 South, Suite Number 35, subject to the four conditions. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Very well. So seconded by, by Commissioner Richards.
Okay, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
I have to just say, I'm concerned about parking, but I understand in this setting, there's not, nothing we're going to do about tonight, but still want to state it's a concern.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. And Chair Lowry.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Ariaga, thank you for coming and making your application, and we wish you success with your business. Thank you very much. Since it's approved. Moving on to, and again, for the record, we are, we have tabled item number five, Dirty Devil Disposal, to, until the, the March 17 Planning Commission meeting, and we're moving on to item number six, which is the Come and Go Gas Station and Convenience Store located at 6029 South, 9th East. Is the applicant here? Welcome. Okay, and Zach, Zach Smallwood is presenting this.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, just getting all prepped. So this is item number six, Come and Go. It's a conditional use permit application for a gas station convenience store at 6029 South, 9th East. As you can see, it's right there on the corner of, pretty much where Vine picks back up and 9th East. It's currently used as a self-serve car wash, and I, and Flowers on Vine is right there on the corner as well. It's a 1.07 acre site. They are proposing a 3,968 square foot building. It is in the CN Zone, which allows convenience stores and fuel stations subject to obtaining conditional use permit. So we'll go ahead and get started right into it. So parking for gasoline or fuel stations are required, 1 to 200 square feet. It's basic retail is, is how we calculate it. So they need approximately 16 stalls. They have requests, they are proposing 21. I will get into more of this a little bit later, but, and you can't see it very well right here, but there are two parking stalls, one there and one there, that we are proposing that they remove due to its, the, the entrance on 9th East. It just feels a little too close. And then also, I think, providing that open access to their proposed dumpster as well. So we are recommending that they remove those two stalls, so that would bring it down to 19 stalls, still over what they're required to have. So access, they have, they are proposing two accesses on the site. The one on 9th East, which was right here, it's approximately 41 feet wide. This would be a right-in, right-out only, so people from 9th East would not be able to turn into, turn left into the Come and Go. There would be a hard median divider in there, so you can't get in there. They, they craft those really well. The north side, however, on Divine Street, where there currently is no access, they are proposing to place a bridge over Little Cottonwood Creek and have a full access, so that would allow for right-in, right-out, left-in, left-out.
Can I ask a question about that while you're talking?
Yeah.
Currently, the road is double-striked in the center on that road, so would it not be illegal for them to turn, turn left into that?
According, according to Trey, they would be able to turn left, so I'll leave it up to him. Trey's the city engineer.
Maybe that, maybe he has the intent of them restriping that section. I don't know.
Potentially. I'm not sure. That, that was all just redone, so I highly doubt they're going to re-stripe it, but I don't know. But technically, we would allow for a full access there. So there was a traffic impact study done, conducted, 118 pages long. I provided the executive summary to you guys, because 110 of those pages are just diagrams of, of models that are done. So in, in the executive summary, it was stated that no changes were recommended, that actually it would help 9th East go from a level, that intersection going from a Level F, I believe, up to a D. So it, having that would, would eliminate, having that right-in, right-out would, would help that intersection quite a bit. Let's see. So we will move on to the building design. So staff didn't have any concerns here. It's a mix of hardy board, so this, this would be hardy, hardy board area with wood plank material as well. It's not actually wood, it's fiber cement board with metal accents on there. On the back, it's mostly the, the fiber cement board with, with very, yeah, not a lot of accents on the back there, because you don't really need it. Same goes for the, the two sides. This would be the side that faces 9th East here. This would be the side that faces the east side of the property. And I just realized I didn't fix these pictures before I did this slideshow. This is the proposed canopy. Actually, before I do that, let's go back to this. So the building itself is proposed to be 21 feet high. The zone allows for up to 35 feet, so they are well within their height restrictions there. And 21 is at the peak of this, this point here, which is on the northwest corner of, of the building.
Zach, what's the zoning right around there? Again, is it R110?
R18.
It's R18.
Yep.
And what's the height, what's the height limitation on a residential building?
35 feet.
Okay, so is this the same height?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see. So it's not letting me edit these, but you get the, the general idea, and that it actually shows what I'm trying to point out anyway. So this is approximately 17 and a half feet tall for the canopy structure. In the staff report, I had called out that I, that staff wants to see this specific sign be removed. It's a three-by-six illuminated, illuminated can sign. It actually faces east, which I think would face directly into the neighboring property, so I've recommended that, that the Planning Commission make that go away, because I don't think it's needed, especially since it's right next to a single-family home. So moving on to the landscaping plan, so the vine side, we were good with the calculations. They have the inadequate amount and number of trees, shrubs, bushes. However, the 900 east side is missing some trees. I apologize. It's in my staff report. Let me think if it was four. I lied, five. So five additional trees need to be placed on that 900 east side, and we can work with them during the building permit process to, to get those incorporated. I will commend them that they proactively placed, you can't see it very well in here, but these, these little guys right, wait, no, these little guys right here are evergreen trees that they are proactively planting along that east side there, that will help buffer that single-family residence. Again, there are already established, well-established trees on that property to, to the east. So we feel pretty good about that. Let's see. Fencing, we'll get to the fencing side now. So the Planning Commission can permit up to an eight-foot fence, eight-foot tall fence of whatever material you decide. Staff is recommending that they be required to place the fence on the east side, as the, I believe the code calls out that that can be allowed between residential and commercial properties. In the staff report specifically, I didn't state that we would require the, the south property to have an eight-foot fence, but from some of the emailed comments in, I think that might be a good, good approach to take, is put the eight-foot on the south side as well. So we don't have any concerns with that either. So then we'll move on to the dumpster area. So our code technically states that a dumpster cannot be located between the street and the building. However, the, the Planning Commission may grant that in exceptions. So as you can see, they are proposing a dumpster between the building and the street. I believe this is, we as staff believe this is the best option, so it's not placed next to the residential, to the east. So we are willing to support that, that request by, by the, by the applicant. Let's see. Okay, so a couple little things, signage. As was stated in your, in your staff report, they've proposed an eight-foot tall monument sign. I pulled this straight from the code. We only allow a maximum height of six feet, a one-foot base with a five-foot max sign area, so they'll need to cut that down. And it looks like they have enough space to kind of bring that down a little bit, so we're not concerned. I think they can make that happen. The rest of the, the proposed signage that was in the packet meets the code, so, except for that one on the east side that I've recommended them take out. Next are the lighting plan. So we as staff, or the city requires that the, any light pollution be eliminated to zero-foot candles at the property line. We saw significant, significant lighting at the property line, up to, let's see. On the east side, I saw up to one-foot candle. On the south side, I saw up to seven, seven.
Can you define what if, what one-foot candle is and what zero is?
That's a great question. I can't really, I don't understand it 100%. I just know that it's really the zero, zero means you're not having any light spill over in, from any light source into another property. So obviously, anything above that, we don't, we need to have an absolute zero at the property lines. So that's typically downward facing, down, so that there's not deflecting out.
And inward facing towards the property most likely.
Correct, yes. Yeah, so that's, that's what we require here as well.
Sorry, was that a condition, or is that just a code?
The code requires it, and because they are showing, they are not, they are showing that it is above that amount, it is in a condition that they work with us and provide a photometric plan that shows that they meet that zero-foot candle.
Okay.
We've, I, I made a couple suggestions in there that they could use like ballard lighting, especially in the rear, to where it doesn't kind of spill over into properties.
Can I ask you a theoretical question, Zach?
Sure.
And we'll still be friends.
Am I going to question my life?
No, not that deep. So the lighting on the back side.
Yeah.
So one of the concerns with a facility like this is that people lingering back there at night or hanging out back in the back at night.
Sure.
And that's a concern for the community, and part of the way we try to discourage that is have lights back there. So by saying we want zero at the fence line, are we allowing them to just take the lights out completely in the back? There's still some recommendations, they need lighting.
Yeah, they would need lighting back there, and I think for their, I'll, I'll let the applicant address this, but I would assume they would want lighting back there as well, because they don't want to see that either. Because this is technically how they get to, there's a door right here, this is how they get to.
Employees.
The, the dumpster location, so they want that to feel safe for their employees as well. So there, there are ways of shielding that light, like I believe Commissioner Lowry said, that you can actually change that light to kind of hit the building as opposed to just kind of out, so.
Maybe potentially changing the bulbs or wattage as well, or something.
Exactly, yeah, yep.
Okay.
So, um, great, we'll move on to, so we did send out 55 public notices of the meeting for tonight. The Planning Division, as of, as of right now, I just checked the email just a moment ago, we've received 10 emails from seven different property owners. There was also one phone call where staff spoke to the property owner nearby. So I summarized largely what the concerns were. We will read those into the record at the beginning of the public comment portion. But to summarize largely, the, the citizens had emailed concerning property values, traffic, environmental, considering tank leaking and gas leakage, lights and potential crime in the area. So I'm, I'm just going to go over a couple of those, just really briefly, real quick. So regarding property values, typically, we see, there's been a lot of empirical evidence that shows that when people reinvest in their properties, regardless of it being commercial or residential, that it typically brings up property values across the board. So we don't anticipate that that will be affected. The housing market in Utah is very strong at the moment. I don't anticipate that changing. That's not expected to go down anytime soon. Traffic. This is, this is a service use. This, how I wrote it down is a service use, so it's not specifically a destination. You know, people aren't, you know, hanging out in Midvale and saying, oh, I want to go to the Come and Go in Murray. It's, it's primarily people are going to use this facility if they're already traveling on 9th East. So we don't anticipate additional large impact from that. It, it just, I, I don't see that. It, it just, I, I don't see that happening. Environmental, this was reviewed by all city departments, including the water department, the wastewater department, city engineer, police, fire. I don't think I've left anybody out. And all of their concerns were addressed in your staff report. And a lot of those were considered in the conditions of approval, especially the city engineer. Specifically regarding the state requirements that there are, there are state, and I believe county requirements that need to be addressed in getting those, those tanks. And do you want me to speak to the, the, what you had just mentioned in the pre-meeting about the, the stormwater thing? Yeah. Do you want to do that? Would you mind? Yeah, just, I'll, I'll let Danny speak just quickly to those, those environmental things that, that we kind of talked about in our pre-meeting. Just for the record, Danny Astle is the Public Works Director and interim Community Development Director.
That's fine. So, you know, to, to speaking to the, the question about the environmental questions in regards to the underground storage tanks. And so there, there are limitations. And one of the things that the, the county has as part of their, they have a setback requirement from the river. And that's really about the, the limit to what they do. But the state controls really, really stiffly the underground storage tank program. So all of these, anything, anything that goes in, whether it's replaced or brand new, has to meet these new regulations and, and they're pretty onerous. And they're, you know, double wall tanks and double lined lines going from the pump to the, to the supply. The pump shut offs, emergency shut offs and things like that. They also require regular testing of those tanks as well. But the other things that, that, you know, that the city looked at in a wastewater and stormwater are, are those very things. What's going to happen with the stormwater? And anytime we, we, we deal with things like this, when there's, there's a water source close by, obviously the river that could immediately go to this, to the river. There, there are storm drain requirements. Water has to be contained on the site for a short time. And if a spill does happen, it's not going to get to the river. There are those types of things already in place. But in addition to that, it's in a well protection zone, a wellhead protection zone. Murray owns a well just a little bit east of the. And so there's a little bit more requirements in there that require welded pipe, so that there's no joints in the pipe, so that nothing can leak out either the sewer or the stormwater, so it can't contaminate the site as well. So there's, there's lots of things that have gone through this, that this, that this has been vetted quite significantly. Do you have any, did that answer the questions?
Thank you very much.
Awesome. So I'll keep, I'll keep going on. So the lights, like I said, we kind of addressed that just a couple of sections back. We, we were concerned about that and we would require the applicant to work with us to bring something forward that, that works. And lastly, crime. So this will actually be more of an active use than what was previously there, which was a self-serve car wash. There will be employees on site being able to monitor and, and see what's going on. I anticipate, I can't speak for the applicant, but I anticipate they're probably going to have some sort of camera, at least on the back. So that they can monitor and make sure people aren't just loitering and hanging out back there. So I, I feel like the safety thing is it'll actually be a little bit safer. It'll be well lit, but not overly lit. So we'll make sure, make sure we clarify that. And they'll have, there'll be an active employee there almost constantly. So with that, I thought I was going to have to talk about the site some more. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit and grant the design approval to the allow, to allow the construction of the come and go gas station at the, at 6029 South 900 East, subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you for your report.
Questions.
Are there questions for, for staff from the, from the, from the, the commission? You'll have a many, they'll, they'll be, yes. So if you remember, our, our agenda is we, this, the staff presents and then the planning commission will ask questions. At that point, we will, we will turn the time over to the applicant and then public comment will be, will be after that. So yes, you'll have, you'll all have time. Does the commission have any questions for staff at this point?
Do you know, I could ask this to the applicant, but the canopy and the light you're recommending or the sign you're recommending they take down? The sign was lit, is the canopy lit on the side? Do you know that?
Let's take a look.
Or I can wait.
I would assume not. I mean, it would, they probably have downward directing lights to, to, to light the, the pumps themselves, but I would, I, I wouldn't assume the actual canopy itself is lit. But that is definitely a question. We can actually probably answer that with this guy right here. Actually, that's not going to tell me, because that's going to tell me overhead lighting.
Either way, the, the light would be mitigated by the condition that you put in there for the zero light. Whatever that term, whatever that term is.
Foot candle.
At the property line.
Yes.
Okay.
My, my thought or question was very similar. Cause I was thinking by removing that sign or mitigating the issue, but I guess it there, is that sign, one of the signs that would have to apply for a permit for signage?
Yes.
Does that fall in that category?
Yeah, I just included it as part of this review for design review anyway. But yes, they do have to get a building permit to install signs.
I, I guess you recommended that we put a condition on as removing that sign. If, if having that sign on there and it still falls below the zero candle, whatever they are, then
Yeah.
is that even necessary?
Maybe not, but I mean, that it's just, it, I'm trying to think of, you know, of the neighbor next door. I wouldn't necessarily want a light right there.
I don't really think it serves a purpose. It's not hindering the applicant.
Right. I, I, I don't honestly see, as you're driving west, that you'll actually see that sign through the trees.
Yeah. I guess what I was saying is I don't think they'll be able to put it there no matter what.
Possibly.
We already have a condition. I guess we could clarify.
Yeah, possibly. Yeah.
Are there other questions from the commission? Zach, I would, one of the, one of the topics we addressed in our, our pre-meeting was the state statute regarding permitted conditional uses and the planning commission's role. And could you, would you mind summarizing?
Definitely. So I'll give the medium answer. So there are, in zoning, there are three types of uses. There are not permitted uses, which means they're just not allowed in the zone. There are permitted uses, which means they don't need to come to you as a body. They are just allowed to go in, apply for business licensing, do whatever they want. Like a restaurant along state street, doesn't need to come to you guys every single time.
Within the statute.
Yes. Yeah. And then the third one, which is why we're here tonight is called conditional uses. The state has mandated that conditional uses that the planning commission must approve a conditional use if the reasonable application of conditions would mitigate potential impacts. So that, that's pretty much it. So the, your role as the planning commission is to make sure that they are meeting the, that the impacts that we've kind of laid out, you know, through conditions are being met reasonably. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Can I, I just want to clarify or clarify with a question. But basically we have determined that a gas station may have impacts. And that's why we've made it condition, conditional use. And our job now is to try to mitigate those impacts, not necessarily determine if we want a gas station here.
Not remove impacts or, or the use. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll invite the applicant to come forward and to, if they have a presentation and to speak to the commission. I'd ask you to speak, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Christian Michelson with Galloway and Company and I'm representing Come and Go tonight at this hearing. I want to thank Zach and all the staff. We've done a lot of coordination with them and tried to do exactly what Zach has, has explained here tonight in mitigating any negative impacts that the, that the storm might have in coming to, to Murray. Come and goes really excited to be part of the Murray community. And this will be one of the first stores that they're launching in Utah. So most people in, in Utah aren't familiar with the, the product that they have, but the Come and Goes owned by the Kraus family. And it is a family owned business. These are all corporately owned stores. They're not franchised and so they're well maintained and well kept and well lit. And all the equipment is kept up to standard and it's a very, very professional operation. I think I actually wasn't familiar with it either until we, we started representing these guys. And I went and toured a bunch of their stores over in Colorado and was really impressed with the operation that they, they have and the way that they conduct their stores and, and, and perform. Don't have a big, big presentation to give you tonight, but I do want to say that Come and Go is an amazing community partner. I think you'll find that, that they're pretty, pretty awesome to have in your town. They do give 10% of their profits back to nonprofit organizations within the community. And they do a lot of community outreach things. They, they actually have a food give back program that they do. So when, when food doesn't meet their standard, which is extraordinarily high, they'll actually take those and, and give them to local food pantries. And it's still really good food, but they just don't want it to go to waste. And they do a lot of really cool things within the community, community partners that they have. I guess a couple of other things to mention is that the state requires that they have an A, B and a C operator. And, and they always do have an A, B and a C operator for underground storage tanks. And so most of their employees are certified as C operators. And the B operators are the managers and then their A operators are subcontracted like Seneca is a, is a company that they work with. And they're, they, they're professional fuel tank and, and system installers. And they deal with these systems all over the country. So all of the systems that they install will be installed to meet all the federal, state and local guidelines. I know some of these questions come up and, and I just want to say that I think the staff's done a really good job of, of giving you information. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And so just want to, want to thank you for your time.
Before we get to the questions, I don't believe we got your address. Feel free to, to your corporate address.
My apologies. Yeah, it's 172 Northeast Promontory, Suite 274.
Very good. Have you, have you and the applicant reviewed the, the currently 15, the 15 conditions?
Yes, we have.
Would you be able to comply with those?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll open up to questions from the commission.
I think the only question I have is we talked about adding a condition for the eight foot masonry fence along the east and south line. Would that be okay?
Yeah, we, we are willing to comply with that condition and we're happy to do that. We think that that will help limit the light bleed. It'll also affect a lot of the safety concerns that I think frankly exist right now. And I think that it'll make the site better, safer and, and more pleasant all, all around.
I have to ask for clarification. Are we discussing the fence line for the east side only or the east and the south? In the report, it says it doesn't seem to require any foot fence line along the south side. We recommend, well, we haven't really discussed it. Then the report, we just, we talked about the east side.
I would, I would, I would propose there will be a 16, there would be a 16th condition, which would be an eight foot masonry fence on the, on the east and south side of the property.
Is the south side residential or commercial?
It's commercial. It's commercial.
So, so I think we have just, we have a condition 14 that already talks about that. I think we can just add south side to that condition.
Yep. That's true. Very, very good idea.
And wasn't that a recommendation? Zach, the south side?
You encouraged it.
Yes. Okay.
So then just, so the south side approaches ninth east. So there will be a vision issue with coming in and out of the parking lot. So there's setbacks required with the fence line, right? Okay.
To, to the extent that, that UDOT will allow us to do that and, and we can comply with the code. I think, you know, the indications from, from the owner, my client are that they're open to that.
Can you talk about the applicant's environmental, their operations in terms of how often they do inspections? How often the, the A, the, the A, the B and the Cs are, are doing that and what their, what their cadence is for that?
That's really not my area of expertise. I'm a civil engineer and so I, you know, I design civil stuff and so. But we could certainly provide you with that information and they're, they're absolutely meeting all of the requirements that, that, for inspections, testing, et cetera, that, that is required of those ABC UST operators. Their compliance operation is significant.
Mr. Lowery, for the clarification, our business licensing department would not approve their license if they hadn't met at least the minimal standards required. Is that correct?
Correct. Love to know they're going above and beyond, but are there any other questions from the, from the, the commission?
The only other question I had was the sign on the east side of the canopy. Would you be okay with doing that?
Yeah, we're, we're fine with eliminating that. Not a problem.
I think that my, my concerns with this, you know, and Zach kind of mentioned that whether, whether, whether we like the idea of a gas station there or not, it's a little bit immaterial. But for me, my biggest concerns are environmental, per seeking personally, are the environmental and then the lighting concerns. And I want to emphasize the zero candle, that's emissions that it's expected on the neighboring properties. I've seen in, in other, in other, other developments where the, you, you actually will point the lights away. Those exterior lights away from, from the neighborhood and to act as a, as a barrier. And you, and you actually get as, you can get, you can get a zero, zero, zero candle on that fence. That, to me, that's something that's of critical importance. I, I, like I said, whether, whether we, whether, whether as personally, I, I love the, the gas station use or not. The impact from an environmental standpoint to me is very important for this area. And also the, the, the light that could, the light pollution frankly, that could go over to the, to neighbors is of paramount importance to me personally.
Yeah, absolutely appreciate those concerns. And I mean, Come and Go's owner, owner of over 400 stores and developing more every day. So obviously we hear this, this concern a lot and we're, we completely understand. So something important to understand is that all of the lighting on site is downcast lighting. So we're, we're not throwing light horizontally very much on purpose. And all of the, the lights on the building are shrouded. And so what you're seeing there and, and Galloway does the photometrics plans for Come and Go for Utah. And so we're happy to rearrange those until we meet the standard. You, you kind of asked about what a foot candle is. I mean, it's literally the amount of light a foot away from a burning candle. And so it's, it's not a lot of light. In fact, I've heard a lot of people describe it as essentially what you would be, what kind of light you would get on the ground on a moonlit night, right? It's pretty, pretty low amount of light.
We like, we like zero in, in residential areas.
Right.
From commercial.
And so that is good and, and we're happy to work with the staff in order to achieve that. We do want to have a safe site. We want to have it be safe for the employees. We want to have it be safe for the customers. Safety and security is a top priority for Come and Go. Part of what's happening underneath canopies is that you're, you're doing financial transactions. People have their credit cards out. And so we want to make sure that they're able to see what they're doing. And they're also, you know, they're dispensing gasoline. We want to make sure that they have adequate light to be able to do that. And, and so that's a, a big priority for us.
I understand. I, I would, I would, I, I think that it, and it may be a little more expensive. But I think that you can accomplish both the, your, your safety requirements and also hit the, be the zero candle light.
Absolutely.
Emissions as well.
Agreed.
Very good. Sorry, I'm a.
You're fine.
So I had one, one thought and we talked about this a bit in the pre-meeting, but I don't know if in other operations that Come and Go has, and this was spoken to by some of the residents who provided feedback, the, the issue of to by some of the residents who provided feedback, the the issue of home values in terms of putting a gas station near their homes. Is there anything that you can speak to in other places where that is actually? I think the discussion we had was that it actually will help the home value. And so I wonder if you could speak to that and affirm that in any way.
I I really don't have anything more to add to what Zach said. I I think that's generally true. And I don't really, I can't say anything beyond what he said. He said it well. If I may, one second.
Please.
There was a question about cameras and safety on the on the building. There will be cameras in the back of the building and cameras inside, 360 degree cameras. And so that will all be monitored. There won't be people camping out back there loitering or anything like that. In fact, I would, I mean, I swung by the site on the way here and I would say that condition is probably going to be a dramatic improvement.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate all the discussion. I have two more other thoughts about environmental concerns. Appreciate the discussion we've had. We haven't touched base on the bridge over the river. And I just want to discuss that for a second. Condition number eight addresses it. And I guess you're good with that. And is there any further thoughts you have on how you're protecting our river with building that bridge?
Yeah, so Trey Stokes and I have been dialoguing on that. It'll be pile supported bridge and it will be pre manufactured. So it'll go in quickly. It's all pre designed and then kind of delivered to the site. So that's how we propose to do that. We're going to completely span the existing channel there. So there won't be any, you know, negative influence on that channel. Also went and looked at that tonight, which I was amazed. It's almost dry. It's crazy. But yeah, we we were planning on submitting to Salt Lake County Flood Control and and obviously to the city as well.
My one other thought was traffic. We haven't discussed that too, too much. Specifically Vine Street, we're permitting you to put an entrance there on Vine Street that has right in, left in. But with the caveat that we could come back and restrict it in the future if there's traffic issues there. And I just thought it's worth stating that and stating they were trying to address the traffic needs. And if there's any other thoughts or discussion around it.
Yeah, we're, we're obviously sensitive to the traffic around the site. One thing I I would like to point out is that as Zach mentioned, convenience stores and fueling stations are really not trip generators. They're just trip absorbers. People are stopping by on their way someplace else. Very, very few trip generations come from the construction of a fueling station. So it's probably not going to add much traffic, if any. I do feel like the right in, right out situation on Ninth East is going to be a big improvement in safety over the dual entrances, especially with the proximity of the north entrance to that intersection beyond what's what's already there. As far as Ninth or Vine Street goes, the left in, left out isn't essential to our operation. So we fully plan on being able to function without that. I think that that time will tell essentially, you know, I think people tend to learn traffic patterns and learn how they respond. What's safe at noon might not be safe at 8:30 in the morning, right? And so a lot of, a lot of the decisions we make as drivers is left to our discretion. Is this safe right now or is this not safe right now, you know? Conditions affect affect what's okay and what's not okay. And so there's a lot of analysis in the in the TIS, obviously. And so I would say maybe just refer you to that, but we're fully prepared to function without the left in, left out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good. Well, thank you for your time. We'll likely there'll be some, some items to address from the the from the upcoming public comments, I'm imagining. So
Sounds good. Will I get a chance to address those if needed?
Okay, thanks. Zach, I think what might be good out of the, for the folks that are here is to allow those that are here, if they've made a comment, we want to let you know if you've made a comment, we would not read your your comment that you, if you want to make, if you want to come and make a verbal comment. I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. We've received several emails and written correspondence making it making public comment. We have many, we have several members of the community, which we're excited to hear your comments. What we will, what we will not do is allow, so you can't come and make a verbal comment and then have your written comment read into the record as well. So we'd ask you to choose if you would like to, if you'd like to make a verbal comment, we welcome that. We ask you to to try to keep it to three minutes if you can. If you would prefer to have your your written comment read into the in, then 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 please, you don't even, you don't need to to come to the podium and we will read them in at the end of the of the public comments. So at this point, I'd like to open to public comments. Again, I'd like to ask you to come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and your address for the record and and do your best to keep the comments to three minutes. So we'll open it up. Please.
My name is Kayhan and I live in 653 South Bridges Lane. I have a question and the comment. The first and the the project has a canopy light, says candlelight, but the canopy light is 150 watt LED lights. That's a 20,000 lumen. It's really bright. And it's a like a even like a 20 LED light is a 150. The regular light, you know, that strong. So if it's a corporation and they're gonna be on in the lights on for 24 hours. And I believe the neighbor that it's it's a residential gonna have problem with the nightlife. The second one that I want to ask the developer, how do they gonna evaporate those evaporate gas in the tank? When they deliver, they have to release the evaporate gas filled the empty tank. They need to release it and and I want to know how do they gonna do it because sometimes they have to make a pipe and release it. Or they just collect everything into the the delivery tank and release the new fuel in the tank. I'm a owner of the gas station, so I know how it's going. But the problem is leaking tank or that's not the problem. Because that one is really protected and but what I'm saying is the evaporate gas is releasing and that neighbor is gonna smell the gas every day, all day. And so I think I need to know that, you know, how do they gonna release those evaporate gas from the tank? And the canopy lights and how long they're gonna turn it on because even they just, you know, the turn that part of it, it's just still gonna bother the neighbors. I don't leave that right by it, but I just concerned that lights because in my experience, I had gas station one on 39th and the apartment in the back and they always complained that my lights on. So I turn it off because it's a private owned. But that's a company owned and I don't think, you know, they can. So they have to be light on. And plus the canopy, the side always have a light. And that's just like a design of it. And I never seen the canopy doesn't, the side doesn't have a light. So that's what I want to tell.
Appreciate your comments and questions. We'll, we'll, as, as we mentioned, the applicant will have opportunity to answer all the questions at the end of the public comments. So thank you very much. Sure.
Sorry. Okay, so the even that there is no leakage or anything, when they deliver the gas, the driver always spills all over the parking. I mean, the ground and plus as a customer and I even sometimes like spilled a little bit because you know, that is a fueling and that happens most of the time. But all those is accumulated in like, you know, 10 years, 20 years. And it's going to accumulate the, it's gonna contaminate the soil and the and the rain waters and whatever the clean the parking lot, it's gonna, you know, effect, I mean, the effect, the, you know, the stream, my pretty creeks gonna be contaminated little by little because my, um, the property that I got rid of, I I grounded out. I just make it right now. I'm trying to build a retail for that corner. But when I did the phase two, the test, that's a soil test, even my property, not even my property, it's across the street corner has they find it out that the residual of the, you know, the fuel. So that's my another concern that if if that comes to our property and I don't want to that's my dream house and I don't want to do it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Brittany Noble. I'm probably the second closest house to
Will you state your address? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's 953 East Bridges Court. And I will just read basically my email and make a couple points off of that. So just want to say thank you for taking the time to listen to us and having this meeting. What I would like to ask is how many people in this room would like to have a gas station put right next to their house? Because that's what's about to happen to me. Please go ahead and raise your hand, knowing that it will decrease your home value because that's what most studies say is about 16% on average. Regardless of what other people in the room have said. The 24 hour canopy lighting blaring in your window while you're trying to sleep at night. And the clientele that it will more than likely bring, making you feel that it's not safe for your kids to play right over the fence in your backyard. We all understand that the properties along Ninth East have been zoned commercial. But you have to understand that when we all moved in, they were all used as residential, aside from the car wash that's always been there and the quiet yoga studio, just aside from my fence. My question would be what kinds of studies have been done to support this? There are already so many accidents at the corner of Ninth East. Just last night, we had a car flip over and everybody had to go through the 7-Eleven parking lot to get home. Can it really handle even more traffic through here? All of the U-turns trying to get into this gas station, that's what would happen. Has a traffic study been done? I guess we heard that it has, but to figure out what's going to happen. It doesn't seem like an, like an easy area to get in and out of really. And we know that people will turn left trying to get in. Also, what kind of environmental studies have been done? The gasoline will run off into the creek. With the crime, traffic accidents, environmental issues and value that we will lose in our homes, I would wonder why this would even be considered. Thank you for listening. Just a couple of things I wanted to add is that gas stations really aren't supposed to be put in within 500 feet of homes because of the fumes that we are all going to be breathing in. And there has been a board member or somebody in Philly, in affiliation with the board that had Nan's property that was sold about six months ago. And she didn't have any information about this. So my question is, why would she have sold this property other than she knew that her property was going to go down in value? So regardless of saying that they're not going to go down in value, well, obviously she felt like it was. So thank you for listening.
Can
You're coming.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you have a citation for the 500 feet from a home? A reference?
Will you come back to the podium so the folks that are online can hear you as you, as you read this into record?
Yeah, I'll have to find it for you.
All right, we'll get, we'll, we'll get you back. Any other public comments? Please.
My name is Sterling Hanson, 6067 Bridges Lane. I'm the president of the HOA there and I'd send an email, so I'm kind of double doing it here. So get my email. It's got a lot of bullet points.
I read it.
And there's a few other things that came to my attention as we were sitting here that I wanted to add on. Mark Noble, her husband, actually got that 500 foot notation from the mayor. He, he was speaking to the mayor today and isn't that correct?
Oh, actually, it was from from the Eagle Mountain.
Okay. So that's something to explore, obviously. And I'm sure, I mean, if you had a gas station proposed to be built right, right next to you, you'd probably feel the same way that we do. The fence that they're proposing on the east side, I'd like to know what kind of fence. They say it's masonry. Is it cinder block? I mean, is it going to be nice looking? Like to know the the details on that. And I'd like, if if it goes in, I'd like it go higher than eight foot. I mean, I think the higher the better. And then, sorry, these are just kind of disjointed comments, but and then why is, why is this public meeting taking place so far down the road? I mean, shouldn't this be happening before they're ready to build? I mean, and by the way, I didn't even receive a letter. I, it says that you, you said like 56 letters went out, but I I didn't get one and I don't know why. Did you just randomly send to whoever you you felt was appropriate? I mean, how does that process work? They talked a lot about shielding the light, but you can't shield it 100%. I mean, light will go over things and and of course you can't shield odor, which we've talked about. Odor is a big deal. And nobody wants to smell gasoline. They talked about a 21 lot parking. That's a lot of, that's a lot of parking. I mean, most little convenience stores that I've seen on corners, maybe five or six or seven, 21, we're talking about a pretty big gas station here. And that's going to increase the traffic. And speaking of traffic going to cross on Vine, that bridge that they're proposing is going to be really close to the intersection. I see that as a, as a super hazardous situation. So I don't know how they're gonna, how that got approved. Okay, those are the main things I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Please, yeah.
I sent an email as well, so I'll keep this very brief. I apologize. It's just something that came up as we were discussing.
What's your name and your address?
Kimberly Furness and my address is 959 East Bridges Court. And you'll excuse me, I hate public speaking, so I get jittery.
You're doing great.
So if you come out of our neighborhood and you go a couple of blocks to the north, you hit a 7-Eleven gas station. And before that, on the west side there, you hit a massive Macy's grocery store. If you come out of our inner, or come out onto Ninth East and go south, you hit a gas station, couple of blocks that way, right there before you get to the freeway. If you just cross our street, just walk across Ninth East, you hit a 7-Eleven. And if you were to turn and go east behind us, you will hit a gas station at the end of that street. So we are literally surrounded by convenience stores and gas stations. I just, I have no idea why Murray needs another one right there. It's great that they give to the community, but those of us that live the closest, we're not considered actual Murray. We don't get Murray power. We don't get Murray garbage pickup. We do that through Salt Lake County. So we're in Murray, but we're not Murray. I've been told we're annexed Murray. So this is going to affect us, but the most, but we will see no benefits of the Murray City charitable donations, et cetera. So again, we're surrounded by gas stations. Why do we need another one right there? And it does sound pretty huge if they need that many parking spots. And there's that big grocery store that Macy's that has plenty of parking and shopping and whatnot. And also the 7-Eleven that's across from us, it had gas pumps when we moved in. There were two or three gas pumps there and they took them out. And it did smell like gas, smelled like gas when they fueled up. Smelled like gas during the summer when it gets so hot. It did cause traffic and problems. It, they took the pumps out and everybody appreciated it very much. So to put them even closer to us now, kind of blows my mind. And also with what was mentioned about contaminating And also with what was mentioned about contaminating the soil, that's the type of thing that if it does seep into the soil, not from leakage, but from people spilling, people are gonna spill gas, we're not all as competent as we like to think. That's the type of thing that will affect our soil and we won't know for ten or fifteen years. So those of us growing vegetable gardens, there are only a handful of kids that live in the neighborhood, but there are enough that I don't wanna feed my kids poison vegetables and not know it until they're eighteen, you know? And um yeah, I think that's about it.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate them.
My name is Nan Juan Mortensen. My address is sixty fifty-one South nine hundred East, uh, which is next to the car wash right now. And I, I bought it in Sept- September, but I didn't know anything about gas station. And until it's closed, everything done, and then I heard something, but it came too late. And then uh in that property, we do a spa like um and as a owner, I turned down a lot of turning because I want to keep that, that area quiet, not to traffic. Because we have limited parking and uh sorry, and then when I heard that um we can, they're not allowed to turn left, which is gonna affect my, my parking area because we are afraid that people are gonna, oh, we could have turned to our parking and then walk to the convenience of gas station. And we have limited parking already and we don't want any surprise. And sometimes people turn to our parking and then they cannot go around, so they have to go back. So we, we try to keep it more um, more peaceful because we, we have like a personal fitness one-on-one, so it's not that many people there. And we have a peaceful spa and we try to keep our, our place like a calm and peaceful environment like a health issue. But so, I don't know, I'm kind of overwhelmed when I heard about this, so just, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Are there any additional public comments? In that case, Zach, I think it would be appropriate to read in the, the public comments that have, for folks that, that are not in the meeting at this time.
Okay, so first one, so just as a caveat, I am reading these in order of receipt. So first one was from March first and we'll go through the most recent one that I had. So they're not in any particular order except that. This is from Rex Wheeler at sixty sixty-one Bridges Lane. Dear Commission, I live in the small subdivision adjacent to the proposed project. I am not in, in opposition to this. It will probably be a nicer property after the development. I would only ask that a block fence at least eight feet high be built against our subdivision property. Thank you. Okay, next is from Diane Dykman. I apologize if I said that wrong. Doesn't give an address. To whom it may concern, my property is within three hundred feet of this proposed fuel station and convenience store. As a matter of fact, I will have a bird's eye view of this business as my property abuts this business on the west side of my property. I am against approval of the fuel station and convenience store for the following reasons. A commercial property with high flow traffic can be seen from my front door and thus will devalue my property value. Increased traffic with the concern for increased theft and crime. I am a single woman and purchased this home seven years ago because it was a gated community. The current HOA fencing, which is on the west side of my property, height is too low and will not deter from jumping the fence and committing crime. My environmental peace and comfort will be negatively impacted due to increased traffic in the area. If the following fuel station and convenience store is approved, I would ask the council to require Galloway and Company to replace the existing fence with the same type of fence, but substantially higher. So residents don't have to see the approved property. Thank you for your consideration, Diane Dykman. Okay, nevermind. Brittany spoke. So this one was actually from a commissioner. This is from Travis Nay, he is on the planning commission. This was in response to Brittany's emails, Brittany Noble's emails.
It might, it might, it may not be about you to read Ms. Noble's email into the record as Travis does respond to it.
Sure, okay. The first email. So I will read the first email that was put in. So I am emailing in regards to the board meeting Thursday night. I have several concerns, but frankly, from what I have heard, this is already a done deal. So what is this meeting really about? My first concern is that apparently Mrs. Wilson, who owned the property right next door to the gas station, was able to sell her property before this transaction, thus not losing any equity. I have heard she is on the board or has some relations with the, with the city. So of course we have to start to wonder why this deal was really approved in the first place. Second, why in the world would a gas station be approved so close to a creek? Was an environmental evaluation done before this was approved? This is almost unheard of, talk about a contamination issue. Lastly, a wall of eight feet is required separating businesses from residential communities. This needs to be enforced and it would need to, of course, be concrete. Lastly, thank you so much for giving thought and concern to the loss of equity that our homes in this community with uh loose base, based on this decision. I hope all your decisions think about, I hope all your decisions think about the individual impacts on residents living in the city and not just taxes one more business will bring in. With respect, Mark and Brittany Noble. So this, now I'll move on to the commissioner's statement. My family, so Travis Nay, he didn't give his address. My fellow planning commissioners, I will not be in attendance this evening, but as I live four houses away from this project, I'd like to express my support. The river is hardpanned in concrete on three sides as it flows towards the intersection of Vine fifty-nine hundred South and Ninth East. Adding an entrance on Vine will do little to nothing to add to the traffic that already exists at this intersection. While there's always an environmental risk with projects like this, the likelihood of contamination into the river is lessened by the, the existing hardpanned of the stream. The neighborhood to the east of the project is currently adjacent to the car wash. This car wash was frequently, this car wash frequently has suspect vehicles and pedestrians on site at all hours of the day. It is my belief this will improve the overall sight and add more eyes looking out for each other. Additionally, I do not question the integrity of former Commissioner Wilson. There are many conditions that have contributed to selling the property. If she did in fact sell her property, there is nothing to suggest she had any information that would have contributed to moving this project forward in the city. Private property transactions are between private property owners. Thank you, Travis Nay. Okay, so I will move on to Doreen Hanson. Doesn't give an address. To the Murray City Planning Commission, we and a number of our neighbors are opposed to the plan to put a new office fuel station and convenience store on the property addressed as sixty twenty-nine South nine hundred East. The proposed property has a large creek frontage and any spills during delivery would contaminate the creek waterway. In addition, customers often spill gas at the pump and sometimes overfill their tanks of the cars or gas containers, again causing spills. The spilled gasoline will be on the ground, which will then wash into the creek every time it rains, creating negative environmental impact to the creek and its immediate surroundings, as well as continuing downstream as the creek flows. There is also a possibility of the ground tanks themselves leaking. There's no need for a gas station at that location because there are already two different gas stations available in close proximity. One which is about half a mile east and another which is about two-thirds of a mile south along nine hundred east. Homes back up directly to the proposed property and this would negatively impact the homes and the entire neighborhood with increased crime, noise and lights. Each time there is a gas delivery, there will be a release of gas fumes from the ground tank so that the driver can fill up the tank. This should not be permitted in such close proximity to a residential neighborhood. Thank you for consideration, Doreen Hanson. This is from, I want to say it's a Holly Warren, the email says Scott Warren. So, but it's signed Holly, so I'm assuming it's Holly Warren. We are against the new gas station plan, proposed convenience store sixty twenty-nine South nine hundred east. Please do not move forward, we do not want or need it in the area, thank you. This is by Marissa De Gloria. I am against the proposed sixty twenty-nine South nine hundred east convenience store. And then this was from Nick Furness. Originally, we had received an email from Nick and his, and his wife. But since we still have Nick's, I'm going to read this one into the record as well. Dear Planning Commission, I am writing you to ask that you please put a stop to the proposed fuel station that would be built on the property at sixty twenty-nine South nine hundred east. I am a resident in the small neighborhood that backs that, that property to the east. Currently, the property is occupied by a car wash and a flower shop. The car wash is not ideal, but thus far has not presented a huge problem because it is not open all hours and it is not particularly busy. A fuel station, however, would be the opposite. I am extremely concerned that a fuel station and market in that location would be detrimental to our neighborhood for a number of reasons. First, a gas station and market are likely to have very early out, early and late hours that will have people coming and going constantly. The nature of such a place will have people loitering at all hours and very possibly not the kind of people I would want right behind my back fence. I have two small children who play near that fence year round. The thought of someone being able to hop the fence and access them or even talk with them over the fence is very concerning. Even if someone were to toss something over the fence like empty alcohol containers or cigarette butts. Sorry, I lost my place, cigarette butts. That is something my kids, my kids and their friends could easily find. I understand that kids can come into contact with those things in any environment, but I would like to think that they are safe and protected in our own yard and the yard of our close neighbors. Our community is a small one with only eleven homes and though we border a somewhat busy road, the gate we have to our neighborhood helps me to feel okay about my kids playing outside without me there to watch. If a fuel station were to border us to the west, I would defeat, it would defeat the point of our gate in that, in that people could easily access our neighborhood as I've described. Another issue I have with the fuel station is the environmental impact it may have. It is almost guaranteed that gasoline will be spilled by patrons and the fuel trucks, posing a hazard to the surrounding creek as well as a fire hazard. I am shocked that fuel pumps are allowed to be so close to residents' homes. I hate to think of the vapors drifting into our yards throughout the hot summer when we are barbecuing or playing with our families outside. Yet another concern I have is for the traffic that a fuel station and market would attract. The intersection at sixty is south and nine hundred east is notoriously dangerous. A number of accidents happen there every week. My wife was hit in her car in that very intersection. The speed limit for that street is forty-five miles per hour. If people pulling onto and off of the street to access the fuel station there will most definitely be accidents. Many will be turning left from the south to access it, increasing the risk for accidents, both with the cars and with pedestrians using the sidewalk. The pickup location for the school bus that takes our neighborhood kids to Bonneville Junior High is right in front of the proposed fuel station location. It is close enough, the kids can walk to it themselves if the weather is good. If there were to be a fuel station there, I personally would not feel comfortable letting my child wait for this school bus anywhere nearby. If the pickup location is moved because of the fuel station, that would be disappointing. Lastly, I have to say the name of the proposed fuel station is just awful. It is suggestive and unnecessary. I would much rather tell people to turn at the flower shop to access our neighborhood rather than the come and go. Please consider the long-term effects this build could have on our neighborhood and this part of Murray. We currently have the seven eleven across the street and there are gas stations one block south, north and east. Every other gas station I have seen near neighborhoods has a buffer of some kind between them and a neighborhood. This would literally, literally be in my neighbor's backyard. Thank you for your time, sincerely, Nick Furness, nine fifty-nine East Bridges Court. And that is it.
Great, please stay where you are, that's okay. There's, there were several questions, I think we're, we're, we're addressed a little bit towards staff. And I would like to handle, if we could, Mr. Hanson had a question about the timing of, of the meeting. And I'd also love to talk about the timing of, of when commissioners receive notice of, of, of projects.
I would like to just stop you right there real quick. We need to see if there's any public comments.
Thank you so much.
And, and, and then possibly close the public comment.
Yeah, very true, I'm, I, my apologies, I'm.
You're fine, don't worry about it, I just, I don't wanna be in the way if somebody wants to come up and talk.
We're happy to be with you all night long, but I think, I think we do have a provision that we stop at ten or no new business after ten. So forgive my haste. Are there any additional public comments that would like to be heard? And do we have any that come in during the meeting electronically? Okay, it appears that there are no, there, we've received no additional electronic public comments and it appears there are no additional public comments. I think we can close the public, the public comments section. With that, Zach, I think there's a few, a few questions that would be best, that are, that are best addressed by staff. I mentioned a couple already and I think there were some questions, especially around traffic studies and, 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 and the, and, and bridge studies and whatnot.
Sure, so from what I wrote down, and I apologize, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go through these just as I have them. So lighting concerns, the canopy lights. I don't disagree, there are gonna be bright lights, you know, facing downward on the canopy. However, we are requiring that that zero-foot candle is, is mandated at the property line. So it has to go down significantly by the time it hits that property line. It has to be zero there. Concerning the lights on the canopy itself, like around it, I, I would, I would defer that to, to the applicant to address that. Cause I don't see indication of that, but I, I could be, I could be wrong.
Mr. Smallwood, can I ask you some more information on that topic? On some of our signage requirements, we have lighting requirements that vary according to the time of day. So at certain times of day, they have certain candle watts required at night.
Light candles.
Yeah, there you go. How does that apply to the canopy? Does it vary, meaning, you know, business hours are whatever they are, seven to eleven? And then after eleven, does the wattage change or the amount of light that's allowed change like we do with our signage?
In signage, so if it were to be an EMC, yeah, we could require that. We don't have any such code provisions for actual lighting. Yeah. So um the, the gas fumes and the release of the gas fumes, I can't speak to that at all. I would suggest the applicant address that one, if, if able. Gas leakage, I, I know that Mr. Astle had brought that up, that there is contingencies within the stormwater drains that, that capture that runoff and, and store it for a time. And, and yeah, so I, I know that we are aware of it and we the Murray City Water Cottonwood Improvement District, all of those would be working together to make sure that that is, that is addressed, so.
So Mr. Smallwood, I assume that I don't work in water or drainage.
Me either.
Right, so, but those professionals who do spend a lot of time concerned about this area, I, I believe part of the standards are so that drainage goes toward the drainage system. So it's collected in the drainage system. So anything that's spilt or kept there, once it is cleaned or rains, it's intended to go into the drainage system.
Correct.
That's the purpose of setting up a drainage system.
Correct, yep. Let's see, so a couple of things, the the five hundred foot buffer that was brought up, that was stated from Eagle Mountain City, that probably wasn't a study, but probably a code requirement from Eagle Mountain City. Murray City doesn't have anything that, like that on the books.
Can you talk about how, 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 how a code like that would, would go on the books?
How common it is.
I don't know how common it is. It's the first I'm hearing of it, so.
That's something.
Yeah, so i- if it's something that wants to get pursued, I would recommend that residents reach out to their council people to, to, to bring it up as, as a potential.
I think the point I was trying to make is that this commission would not have the authority to, to impose that.
Correct, and, and even if you were able to do that, there are vested rights. Once somebody is, has applied for the conditional use permit, they are. Uh, they are vested under the current code as they were, have applied. So it wouldn't apply to anybody that has currently applied. So also, Mr. Hanson had mentioned the, uh, not receiving a notice. Um, I checked the, um. The mailing list to make sure, uh, he was not on the mailing list. Um, I did do a calculation real quickly, very rough calculation. Um, he is about five feet outside that radius. So he would not have received a.
What, what is the radius of notice?
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet.
Yep. As the crow flies. Um, and that would have been. But I will say, um, I believe Mr. Hanson stated that he's the president of the HOA. Um, and we did send notice to the HOA at, at a property in Draper. Um, so the HOA did receive notice.
Mr. Hanson talked about a fence over eight feet tall. Maybe you can talk about why we're talking about a fence at eight feet because, for, for what we, what our authority is as a commission.
Yeah, the, the Murray City code only allows properties to go, um, only allows for up to an eight foot fence. And that is only permitted if the planning commission, um, permits it. Uh, we don't have taller fences except in very rare circumstances, um, specifically along the freeway. And along the tracks corridor.
Can you talk about the, the look or make of that fence?
Oh, sure. Uh, masonry fence, um. It, it is kind of a concrete fence. I, I, I don't want to say it's pure concrete, but it usually has decorative materials. I would, I would speak to. Um, probably the applicant on what, I, they're, they probably haven't made the decision on exactly what colors and, um. Design it's gonna have.
Be submitted to the city once they draw that up or no?
Um, it's not required to be, um, we don't have a fence permit requirement. Um, but as part of the conditions of approval, we will see that in their building permit. Application.
Can you, uh, speak to the gas and odor issue? It seems to me that may be somewhat of the reasoning behind the five hundred foot thing. Not sure if there's.
Yeah, we, you need to, uh, let's, um, again, we'll, we, we want to make sure that all, all comments are, are made at the podium.
Yeah, I just don't know if there's anything we can do as commission to, to mitigate that.
Um, honestly, no, there's, I, I don't have anything in code to, to mitigate that. Um, I, I will say that they do have to go through various permits at the federal, state and local level. Um, I know that they do have to go through the, uh, DEQ, which is the division or Department of Environmental Quality. Um, so they, there are, um. Things that will be addressed a- as part of that. Um, but at this, at this municipal level and at this land use level, um, I don't have anything that would address that.
Um, we, will you mind talking about the timing of the meeting? Mr. Hanson had a question about. Why this is, why, why the meeting is happening at this, at this point of the, of the project? And maybe I would, I would, it'd be nice to talk about the notice, notification that commissioners receive.
So technically, uh, the public actually gets noticed before the planning commission gets notice of what's on an agenda. Um, we are required to have noticing to, um, all affected or, you know, the, the, the affected. Neighbors with just three hundred feet affected properties, uh, within ten days prior to the meeting. Uh, you as the commission get a packet with an agenda. Uh, approximately a week before typically a little bit less than typically a Friday afternoon at six o'clock when I'm walking out the door. So, um, so. You, you all as the planning commission don't know what's on an agenda until it's sent to you. Before then, I, I, to address the comment about, um. About the, uh, the development of the project, um, as you as the commissioner are well aware. Um, we don't normally see such well-developed plans. Um, Come and Go has done their work. Um, I don't often get. A lot of plans that you, I mean, you could see a lot of conditional use permits where we don't get. These plans as solid as, as these are, these, I, I would just say that Galloway knows how to develop their. Their package materials. Um, I can't really speak to anything else other than that. Because we do as planning staff and as you as the commission see things in all sorts of forms.
I think Mr. Hanson maybe was referring to, um, during, at, at this point, they, 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 maybe they've acquired the property. Um, and, and once they acquired the property, they've owned it for a period of time. And, and now why now is. Is the application coming forward? And I think the answer is because they're taking action on the property as opposed to just owning it.
Um, I can't speak to it exactly. Um, actually, maybe I can.
Okay.
This isn't the right one.
And maybe I didn't ask the question. Well, I guess the, what I'm, what I'm trying.
Well, I, I understand what you're asking and I want to address it. So I don't think they technically have even purchased the property yet.
Okay.
Um, according to the property owner affidavit, um, it's not owned by Come and Go. It's owned by a Nielsen Elsie. Um, so that's what I wanted to address is that I don't even think they've closed on the property yet. Typically in these type of, in these type of conditions, um, they are in their due diligence period. And they have written into the contract that, um, if the sale or if they are not approved to do this, that they will cancel the sale. Um, that's typically what happens. So, um. I would say I don't think it's, the, the property probably hasn't even been executed completely yet. So.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. There was a question about location to the intersection on the north.
And I think traffic studies kind of came up a couple of times.
Yeah. And, and I can only speak to the traffic study as, as I kind of did in the, in the staff report, um, the executive summary of that. Um, without getting into too much really deep, dark detail. Um, is that the, the traffic engineer, uh, recommended that no changes be made. Uh, Commissioner Melkovich will remember, we've seen plenty of times where they have asked for changes in, in. Traffic flows for the vine, for example, asked for, you know, a change in, on state and vine. Um, so it's actually quite odd that they, they haven't requested, they haven't recommended anything. Um, they do say that the, the proposed right and right out is probably the best option, uh, for ninth east. Uh, and, and make no recommendations. They don't see a potential, that they don't see. Any, uh, negative impact to a full access on the north. Um, and, and our city engineer who's very, um. Involved with traffic throughout the entire city, uh, he reads these backwards and forwards and, and. Um, he, he agreed and that you can see it in his, in his conditions as well. And that brings me into the location of the intersection on the north.
Yep.
That was a concern for us at first. We thought it was too close. Um, we measured it though, however, and, and, um. Used it, uh, measured it against our standards and it does meet, um, s- city standards for distance from an intersection.
Um, there were some questions about the number of gas stations and, um, convenience stores approximate to that. And.
Correct.
I think this is one of, maybe something for us to talk about that we don't get to decide the types of businesses that go into commercial products.
And I appreciate if you also brought, we brought that as residents.
Yeah.
Serving our community. We brought that up as a concern in the pre-meeting.
Correct. Um, you, you are one hundred percent correct in commercially zoned pro, so. I will say that the commission does to a degree have a, a control over what goes on on properties. That's through zoning. Um, the zoning at this location, which is neighborhood commercial, has been in effect for a number of years. That's what allowed the car wash to go into, uh, into this property. Um, and as part of that, the neighborhood commercial allows for, um, gas stations. Now, um. Anybody that purchases a property, um, as long as they are meeting zoning rules are allowed to do what their property, what they will. Um, just like I can't, I can't ask my neighbor to take down a, a shed. Um, in, imposing on somebody else's property rights. If there's something allowed in the zoning district, we aren't, we can't just say, oh, I'm sorry, there's too many. They do their market research. They, they see that there is a missing need here. Um, and, and that's typically what, um, drives. Drives new gas stations. Any other questions?
I mean, that covers and for my, for my notes. Is there anything else?
The school bus, sorry, the, the school bus pickup.
Mm-hmm.
On. That, you know, in terms of the, the traffic study, I'm not sure if that was taken into account or whether that could be moved to mitigate some of those.
It could, it could probably be, be moved. I'm not exactly sure where it is. That would be something that would be handled through the school district. And typically, um, in these types of things, we send notice to the school district as well.
So again, let's, let's keep our comments at the podium. I'll give, I'll give you another minute if you'd like. Okay. Well, we'll keep, let's keep our comments at the podium. I'm, I'm happy to open public comment up if we have, if we have any new information that we'd like to share. But, uh, great. I think that, that.
So, school district drop offs and pickups aren't stationary. It's not demanded. It's also always based on the need. And the driver's need to manipulate the, the bus and pick up the majority of children. So. That's always flexible and it's not done by the city. It's done by the school district.
Correct.
So, um, I just have one more comment. It's, um. Uh, honestly, I'm saddened. I'm very sad. I, um, serve on this commission because it's an honor. It's great to be part of the community that I live in. And it's a. Beyond that, it's been rewarding to see how Murray's people in Murray treat each other. How we treat our community and how we treat each other when topics come up. The people in the board work hard to be respectful of our community and the people in our community have always worked to be respectful of our community. When we come in and saw one board member who used to be on the board, it's an assault to all of us. When, we, we don't know what's going on in other people's lives. Uh, everybody on this board has, does not have advanced notice of the topics. To make financial decisions around. I've never had advanced notice. Um, and people who are making financial decisions are making decisions based on their family needs. Which at this point could be medical needs happening in other people's lives. So for us to accuse other people of doing things illegal, I feel like it's also accusing us and I'm saddened by that. I just wanted to make that statement.
I, I appreciate that. And, um, you know, I, I want, I, like I mentioned, that's, I, I wanted to address and I wanted, I wanted the public to understand. When, as a commission, we receive notice. Um, you know, I, I picked this up, uh, and, and saw this on Saturday, uh, this past Saturday. So. Um, I have, I have no reason to believe that anyone else would have received advanced notice. Um, that's when I received my notice. Um, so Zach, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mickelson, do you, like, would you come back and address some of these questions? Would you like to, um, Ms. Noble, would you like another minute for the public comment? We're happy to give it to you. Okay. All right.
Uh, thank you for the, the chance to come and, and address some of these concerns and. Um, as an engineer and a developer and a, you know, Uton and a father, I take these seriously and we try to. Mitigate all these risks as, as best we can whenever we come into a community and, 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 uh. Bring our clients with us and. Um, so a, a, as these came up, I, I tried to write down some, some items to, to talk about. Um, the first question there was the illumination question and I think, um, Zach answered it really well. Uh, the zero foot candles at the property lines, actually very strict requirement. That is, that's pretty stringent, even more stringent than what we see in a lot of other communities. Uh, there is no facial lighting on the canopy. So, uh, that's not, that's not going to happen. I want to talk a, a minute about the, the vapor situation. So a lot of people, um. Don't understand how that works. So.
One second, I think we may have, uh.
Just adjusting, oh, sorry, there you go. When a fuel truck comes in and the ports are opened up for fuel to be put into the tanks. There's another hose that's also connected to the vent from the tanks. And as fuel enters into the fuel tanks, air leaves. That air leaves through a different hose and is captured in the tank. The, the fueling tanker.
So there's not, there's, there's not an open exhaust pipe is what you're saying.
Correct. Um, in fact, the vents that you see at fueling stations are to let air into the tank. As that process happens, not to vent vapors out of the tank. This is called a stage one vapor recovery system and all the Come and Goes have this. So some of, some of other older fueling stations may not. I know. One of the, one of the, um, community members here noted some other things about spills. Um, e- each one of those fueling ports has what called a spill bucket. And, and they anticipate that some fuel might be spilled during that operation. There's actually a spill bucket there to capture those spills, right? So every precaution that can be taken is being taken. Um, one, one more thing I want, I want to bring up here too is. Um, at each, at each fueling station, there's what's called hanging hardware. Okay? This is, the, the pumps are not at where, where you feel, fill up your car. Those are called dispensers. Okay? And, and as the pumps pump fuel out of the tank to the dispensers, there's what's called hanging hardware. Okay? The hanging hardware is the nozzle that you're using. The, the types of nozzles that these guys use are Husky X S nozzles. And they shut off when the pump shuts off, the gas tank is full. The lever is open before the pump is turned on or the leak detector has not completed its test cycle. Um, and then one other thing is that, uh, if the nozzle, um, is dropped. Um, there's a valve in there that shuts that off. It's a spill guard. So the hanging hardware that's being installed with these newer fueling stations is really state of the art. It, it's not, it's not the gas pump of twenty years ago. Probably not even the gas pumps you and I learned to use when we were young and we were learning to fill up a car. They're a lot more safe. And so, um, you know, one thing I would say is, you know, there, the, the concept that there's more gas stations around, maybe those. Maybe they're not as safe as this one will be, um, and still, still in your community. So. Let's see.
Ask you one quick question. What about like the concern of just smelling the vapors over time? How does, I mean, you really can't mitigate that, but I mean, you're saying that there's venting on, when it's, you know, pumped into the tank and. But not when a, somebody's putting it in the.
Yeah, when someone's filling their car up with gas, I mean, you obviously you see that there's like, uh, there's like a little, um, shroud on there. And there's valves and stuff that keep, you know, that keep, uh, and, and actually also on cars. Um, I believe, ooh, I'm going to get this wrong. I think it's since like nineteen ninety four. They've actually had to have certain, um, valves installed in the, in the fueling nozzle to keep those vapors from coming out too. And so there's a lot of stuff that's being done, um, in order to prevent that. I mean, I, I would think probably that your greatest exposure to that is when you're filling up your own car. I mean, I, I, I drive a car that, that has gasoline. That's what it uses. So it's probably my greatest exposure too.
So it may be that technology, recent technology is mitigating some of those concerns that I have had and people are having about.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, uh, yeah, agreed. Let's see. Oh, a- another thing I want to bring up too on that same spill issue, um, is that. Come and Go actually owns their own fuel transportation company. It's called Solar Transport. So they're not just relying on whoever's the lowest bid guy to come out there and, you know, fill up their tanks. They own it. They regulate it. And, and it's, it's part of the corporation that owns, you know, that, that Come and Go owns. So. It, it's very much more strictly enforced the way the training of these employees as they're dropping off fuel. Um, how they do it procedures, it's much more carefully, um. Undertaken than I think probably most other fueling stations are. The fence on the east side, there were some questions about what kind of fence that might be. Right now, um, we're specing what's called Olympus Precast. Um, you see these all over the Wasatch Front. Uh, they're really good looking walls. Textured and, uh, usually have some color to them and they, they look really nice, really nice. Um. And eight foot is a, a big, big wall. I'm six two and it's going to be, it's a big wall. You're not going to hop over an eight foot wall. So.
Um, can you state it on the east wall? Would, can, is it safe to assume the south wall would be the same material?
Uh, yeah, same material. Um. I, I don't, I haven't looked into the zoning requirements for setback or how high that might be or. There might be some variation in the height on the south side. Um, so we'll have to look at that and work on it with staff, but it, it would be the same material.
That, that's, that's a good point. I think in our conditions, we're saying we want it to be eight foot on both sides.
We, we, we will, I think, but it's subject, subject to UDOT and other, and, and, and other, and other statute. In regards.
One thing to keep in mind is that that is the high side of the site. And so you may you may be stepping that up as you're coming coming along there. And so. Just something to note.
There was a question about parking stalls. I think there's 19 or 21.
That's right. Yeah, that was next on my list too. Yeah. So we're gonna go ahead and reduce those parking stalls from from 21 to 19. And that's basically just, you know, code code driven. So.
Is and so you're so you explain that is so you you're required to have that many based on the square footage of the of the building or? Yeah, so that's where that's a Murray requirement. They have to have based on the square footage of the bill, you have to have a certain number of parking stalls. And so that's that you they would they may like to have less and have a bigger building to sell more products in.
Yeah, it's usually the fight. The battle we're fighting is trying to get enough and and or trying. We're not proposing as many and they're trying to make us put in more. That's usually the battle we're fighting, but this is the opposite. So. The the spa to the south. I just want to point out that the vacuums that are on site are probably pretty loud when they're operating. And in this case, that would be buffered by the building and the wall itself. So I would submit that probably going to end up with a quieter place than than before. I haven't measured that, but yeah, that's probably going to be quieter. And then. I I think that. You know, I don't know for sure, but I would I would assume that there's nothing that would prevent me from driving over there and putting coins in the wall. And washing my car or vacuuming my car right now. So. It's kind of a 24/7 operation as it is.
What will your hours operation be?
24/7.
Okay.
But with better lighting and and better separation with the wall and the and the buffer.
I know we touched on this, but maybe I missed it. You can't regulate. The the wattage of the light.
You can. It's expensive to do it that way. And I mean, I think as long as we're meeting the zero at the property line code, it feels like that would be sufficient. That's really all that I have to offer unless you have any additional questions. I do want to thank the council for for listening to. Our presentation tonight and considering our project and. As I said before, we're excited to be part of Murray and and, you know, get to know the neighbors and I think you'll find that it's a it'll be a good addition.
Any other questions by by the commission?
I have two questions, but I think they're going to be directed to staff.
Okay. Great.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hey, maybe two questions and a comment. We'll see. So two questions around lighting and hours of operation. Do we have in our code hours of operation for this zone?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that's what it is right now. It's and then lighting. I know it's not in our code for this area, but. What are our options? And I know he says it's an expense to the applicant, but is it within our preview to? Say we'd like to have the lighting reduced from midnight to four in the morning or something? Is that something we could write in the conditions or is that?
Because I don't have any standard for it.
There's no standard to compare to.
Right, yeah. So the zero the zero foot at the zero foot candles at the property line is is how we've treated it in the past.
Other questions for staff?
So then my one comment, this is a the. Distance between a gas station and residential areas come up before. And as residents, we've had concerns before. So it might be something good that the residents look into talking to. City and. City Council about adding that to some of the verbiage in some of our zoning areas because currently it isn't.
Sure.
So.
And I think whenever there's whenever there's significant public interest in a in a project, I think it's. It's it's a good idea to explain what our role is and and where where our authority begins and ends, if that makes sense. And I think and where this with the city councils does. You know, we may all agree that we like to have 500 or 1,000 feet between a gas station or 10,000. Between a gas station and residential. The fact that I agree with you about that, or I think that I can't I can't I couldn't propose a I couldn't propose a propose a motion. And bind the city to that. I would have to go to the city council and they would have to do that. And so, you know, I think that would be a wonderful thing for us to talk to our city council representatives about in the future. But I I think that's it. That's it. That's something to consider. And the other thing I want to probably. And if you can touch on it again, is in our in the role that we're in, we by state statute. In a conditional use situation, the statute says we're supposed to to ascertain if they're if they these are if it's a reasonable expectation. And so what I've been weighing in my mind are the environmental concerns, which I. I share. I think that I don't think anybody I don't I certainly personally wouldn't argue that a that a gas station is necessarily a. A clean use of 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 property. I think that there's there are there are concerns. There there around that there at the state and the county and the city have. Have have ordinances and and we have procedures. And, you know, I think that that might be and the representation that Mr. Mickelson has made is that. Is this this organization complies with those and. And it complies with those fully. If they don't, then then the state and the county and the city will deal with that. The other for me is quality of life for residents. You know, for me, zero, the 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 zero candles is a is is huge. And I want to thank Commissioner Mickelson for defining that for us. That was a very good definition. And so how this how this ought to look when the if if this was approved. Is when that over that fence, zero candles. And so what I'm weighing is is this reason, are they being reasonable? Is this a reasonable request in light of the the concerns that the residents have, which. I understand those concerns. I will. Commissioners will make some more comments, but I do think it's a it's it's good to kind of stop and understand. And share that we don't get to decide. You know, we we can't arbitrarily say, well, we have too many of one type of business in an area. And get to do that or or get to decide arbitrarily. To change to change the usage of zones. That has to go through a legislative process, basically.
Correct.
All right, sorry, Zach.
No, you're good.
Any other questions for for staff? All right. With that, I think we'll we'll open it up to to the commission for for discussion. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Okay, well. We'll entertain a motion then. We're pretty late in the process. I we're at this point, we're in a motion, so I apologize.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit and grant design approval to allow the construction of the proposed Come and Go stat. Gas station and convenience store on the property property located at 6029 South 900 East. Subject to conditions 1 through 15 with an added two conditions that will be. That they. Remove the lighted logo signage on the east side of the canopy. And the other condition is that. The applicant shall work with staff to install. A fence up to eight feet masonry along the south property line.
Mr. Chair, point of order. I think condition number 11, are you addresses that east facing illuminate?
It does.
Yes, you're correct.
And then the condition 14, maybe do we need to add a condition? Can we just add two?
I propose to make an amendment to number 14.
The reason.
Oh, go ahead.
Since I've made a motion, I'm not sure what we can do here, but.
You can. You can amend your motion.
Okay, I want to amend it. Let me just explain before I amend it why I'm doing a second condition for the the fence. I think that. I I think it would be better to say work with the planning commission to do a fence up to eight feet so they can determine what the best. Fence would be along that property line.
Do you mean staff or commission?
Planning division, sorry.
So you want you want to separate the so the the east foot, the the east fence would be eight feet across the board masonry. And the south fence might be a staggered fence is what you're saying.
Yes.
I appreciate the explanation.
So so can I just clarify my?
Why don't you amend your motion?
Yeah, you want me to just do the whole thing again?
If you'd like. It would. It would probably help Jamie while she's doing minutes.
Here we go. I would like to make a motion that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit and grant design approval to allow the construction. Of the proposed Come and Go gas station and convenience store on the property located at 6029 South 900 East, subject. To conditions 1 through 15. And adding another condition. That will read the applicant shall work with the planning division to install and. Up to an eight foot masonry fence along the south property line.
Okay, we have a motion.
Perfect.
To approve a conditional use permit. And grant design approval to allow the construction of the proposed Come and Go gas station. And convenience store on the property located at 6029 South. 900 East, subject to the 15 stated conditions with an additional 16 condition. Which 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 encompasses the the south, the south fence. And and we'll have the the applicant work with the Murray City Planning staff to construct to to for approval. Do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have an approve. We have a we have a motion from from Commissioner Peterson. And a second by Commissioner Richards. Zach, will you do a roll call?
Yep. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Melkovich.
Yes.
And Chair Lowry.
A very reluctant yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, we we are we we have completed our agenda items. I will ask if there I'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:35 PM.
We have a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for. Thank you for coming.